All right, well, welcome to, is it five thirty yet? Five twenty-nine? Nobody can ever say that I've never been early for this meeting. So, welcome to the Finance Committee of Monday, September fifteenth, five twenty-nine P M, almost five thirty. Thanks, everybody, for coming. This is the official start of the meeting, a little bit early. So we have several of you here. And who we got there? We got Lindsey.
Just Lindsey.
Just Lindsey. Okay. Thanks, Steve. All right, we have nine items on the agenda. First one is donation of goods to elder affairs. Who are you getting that one?
Yeah, that'll be me. Do you want to go first off?
No, no, no.
Okay. I know he has some stuff to do, but yeah, we received.
He can move you up, Brian.
Yeah, because he's helping at the Mass Mutual Center also, so.
Doing the wrestling tonight, too. Dual duties.
Why don't we have Roy go, since we called it, and then we'll have you go.
Yeah, it'll be real quick. So we received an anonymous donation for books to one of our senior centers, Hungry Hill Senior Center. The total value on the books comes out to like two hundred, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. So we're just coming to the city council so we can get approval for that, so we can.
To accept our three hundred dollars worth of books.
Yep, so that our seniors can continue to do their reading.
Did that come from anybody in particular?
They want to be anonymous.
Is it just on to me with Sampson's going out of business there, putting up a car wash? It's about a block away from, I wonder. They had, Sampson's always had some old Hungry Hill kind of stuff. I don't think it works. I just wondered if that was working. If it's private, it's private. Okay, who we do, who do we have here from our committee? Counselor Delgado, are you here? Counselor Walsh, those are the other two members of the Finance Committee. Who do we have? Is that Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, it's Chris Allen.
Hi, Tracy. Can you hear me? How do we unmute her? You unmute her, John.
Oh, hi. Sorry. I got kids in the background. I'm like, be quiet.
Okay, hi Tracy. It's just from the council, I think it's just you and me that I can find right now.
Okay, and I won't be on that long. Tim, I gotta go to an in-person six o'clock meeting, but I'll be on as long as I can.
Was there an item you were hoping to be here for? Or are you just coming and?
No, I'm just coming, but let me look at the agenda real quick and I'll, I'll let you know.
We'll have Brian go next. So we did item one without a vote. We want to go to the end. We don't have enough voters here. Brian Elliott from the police, did you want to go?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counselor. This is the F Y twenty-six master agreement for the jail slash arrest diversion program. It's an ongoing program that we've had for years. This money pays for our nine-one-one, connect the crisis intercept team. So when somebody calls in, they're in crisis, as a part of our response on the police side, we have clinicians that we send to the call, and it's crisis intercept, basically.
Does it usually require this type of thing, usually require more than the police?
Oh, always. Anytime they're available, we always send them. This is one of the new modern policing strategies to de-escalate. You know, when we have clinicians on site, they're the preferred provider by the state DMH. So we get the money from DMH, and then we have them work with us, and they go out to any and all calls. And we don't have them twenty-four-seven, but we have them about sixty-five percent of our coverage.
Is that the BMH or is it?
Yes, yeah, B H N.
Sorry, B H N.
This money here pays for their.
So this is the money we're accepting a grant to pay for that?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good. And does that go directly to the police department?
It's a straight pass through, yeah. Yeah, we are the fiduciary, and it's voice us. We pay the bill.
Okay, that's great. All right, any questions or comments on that? Any questions for Brian?
Yes, Stephen, how would I give him to you? Is that where, because we had an experience where someone from a home was basically lost, and they were ringing our doorbell, called nine-one-one, explained the situation. And they sent some officers who we asked, you know, not to approach the person. They don't, they don't seem to pose any harm. And then another unit came to take the lady away because they recognized her and they knew where she left, so they just, you know, and the police basically kept their distance, and everything was settled.
It may have been one of those scenarios that without knowing specifics, I couldn't say one or another. But somebody who's lost, or it's just a community caretaking thing that seemed, you know, dementia isn't mental health. That's a physical health thing. And oftentimes, we don't know until we get there. But if it looks like somebody who's suffering from, you know, an acute mental health crisis of any sort, that's when we would bring them in. But if it's anything that has to do with danger, or anything on the public safety side, we certainly take it on our side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, and what is your title?
I'm a lieutenant assigned to the Metro Division down there.
So.
I run all these types of.
I apologize for not.
No, no, I run all these types of programs.
So Lieutenant Elliott, anybody got any other questions for Lieutenant Elliott?
I will be presenting this at the meeting because he has to be across the street unless you feel like he needs to be here for that meeting at seven.
Not based on what we're getting for questions here.
I mean, this is an ongoing, and I have the information.
Yeah, good.
And I can always call and get him over here if we need it.
Like that teamwork stuff, that gladness and stuff.
I think we'd rather have him out there.
I think we'd rather have him out there, yeah. I I didn't know what I was encountering as I'm coming down State Street. There's a massive truck, and I said, oh, yeah.
W W B.
Number fifteenth, WrestleMania.
That's what it is.
I went one year with my kids.
Sounds like a fan.
Counselor Delgado's on now.
Oh, yes. Oh, Counselor Delgado, did you guys see him in the parade yesterday, Counselor Delgado? Padrina, he had the most prominent spot in the whole parade.
Thank you, Counselor. It's Padrino with an O.
Thank you. I'll stand corrected, but I will not stand corrected on how prominent you were in that parade. He had a beautiful Navy blue pickup truck with Delgado stuff all over it. And Congressman Neal and I were looking for a place to walk, and we walked with Padrino Delgado the whole length of the thing, and he stood up on top with his fedora-type hat, or I don't know which hat you had on. Richie had a fedora on. I had some other hat. But you look great, man. You're the head of that parade.
Very, it was very, it was a great experience, but very honored to be recognized by the Puerto Rican parade.
It was very nice. You were a class act.
And I appreciate that you guys walked with me.
You invited me. How could I pass up walking with the Padrino?
I need to know he was the Padrino. I would have walked with the Padrino, too. I walked with Adam Carlos and, and, um, dang, can't think of our other legislator. Don't have Padrino.
If you, if you are not a parade, if you're a parade person of any type, we have a couple of great parades in the area, maybe more. But certainly have the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which I've been to a hundred times, and.
I wasn't, I wasn't the only honoree at the, at the Puerto Rican parade. You got a gentleman being very quiet in that room right now who was just as recognized in the parade.
Why don't you tell us who it is, and I'll recognize him.
But I'm walking up. I might lose you guys in the elevator.
Was it, what'd you say?
He said he's walking.
Yeah, all right.
Who else is in there that's Puerto Rican?
Nobody. We're all looking around. A little confused.
It was me.
Okay. Roy.
It was Roy.
Roy.
Me, my organization.
Oh, Roy, really?
Nice.
Congratulations.
Why, we're having fun. We're recognizing people.
We never have fun at these meetings.
At any rate, if you have never attended the Puerto Rican Parade, it's always in the middle of September, and it is a it's a high energy, high it's high energy, music, noise, motorcycles. It's just a good time. Everybody's having fun, and the Padrino is right here.
Mr. Honoree.
Mr. Honoree, so it was very nice. All right, congrats, Roy, on that, and what else we got here? So we've done number one and number nine. We'll just start going down the thing. Number two and three, can you just? Lindsey or Kathy, you're gonna pick that? Maybe you, okay, thanks. Thanks, Lieutenant. Thank you, Brian.
Was there a vote on this point on number one?
And we didn't have a forum, so now we have a forum. We'll wait and vote on all of them still once.
Yep, so that was me. If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, can I take items two and three concurrently, since they're essentially the same?
Yeah, up to sixty-five dollars, man, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Big money here, talking about. So two cash donations from the libraries, one for twenty-five dollars and the other for forty dollars respectively. These were cash donations, and they're going to be deposited into the Springfield City Library account at the discretion of our library director, Molly Fockerty.
Nice, okay, sounds good. You don't need to vote on them right now. But since they are libraries, I thought I would just pass on this little piece of information. Is anybody aware of the library, Springfield Library Foundation event tomorrow? So when the East Forest Park Library was, was voted on, or whatever we did, we got a five million dollar grant from the state, five or six, and then we got two or three or something from the, from the city. Whatever is, those two things added up to nine million, and then the Springfield Library Foundation committed two million bucks. I thought it was a little aggressive, being honest with you. I mean, I, a lot of us pledge, I pledged to it and stuff. But two million bucks from, you know, regular citizens coming up to supplement the nine million that we got from the state and the city, I thought was a lot. And they have achieved it. And tomorrow, there's an event at the at the East Forest Park Library for the last presentation of, I think, a check for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand from the foundation to the city to finish up the commitment that was made. So it's just a nice piece of nice, nice little story there.
What time is it?
I think ten.
Ten, I think.
Ten or ten-thirty.
And.
You were a big part of that library council, so.
Well, thanks, thanks. I busted my butt on that thing and on the help Francis. And so gratifying to see that they both are working, so, thank you. But anyway, just want everybody to know that. So the sixty-five dollars is well appreciated, but so isn't the two million dollars that all, it's all needed in this, in this world of ours, where we all need to help each other. So it's good. Parks Department donation, twenty-three eighty-one, got that.
That'd be me as well. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is another park bench donation with a dollar value of twenty-three eighty-one seventy. This is donated from a Susan Kimball Halpern for Memorial Bench at Forest Park.
Is there, is it?
Who's talking? Who's that talking?
That is me, Counselor.
Who's me? I can't see you.
Sekoi.
Oh, hey, Sekoi. Oh, hey.
How are you?
Good, how are you? All right. Good to hear you.
Is that an existing bench?
It's a new bench. Yep, so a new bench, yep.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Sekoi on the bench going to the Parks Department?
It's just a random bench going and then put it somewhere.
So if you ever go to the park, I run there pretty often. They have a bunch of benches in the park, and they're always like in memory of. So it's like a new thing where somebody will dedicate someone. It's like a cool little memory for people.
Which park again? I'm sorry.
Forest Park, Forest Park.
Yep, yep.
You're like they did for Cateri's husband.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
They're all over.
They're all over. Yeah. All right, thank you. Any questions for Sekoi? Seeing none, we'll move on to bills of prior year.
Me, Counselor.
That's you, and there were a lot of things in there, I saw.
I mean, it's a total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Their prior year bills from various departments that were received after June thirtieth, so we need the council authority to pay them with current year funds. We do this throughout the year.
I know we do this throughout the year, and the main reason is, in this case, like, we just passed June thirtieth, right? So these are bills that came in.
After, and the way we close out is we have to close down purchase orders and contracts at the end of May, so there's sometimes you need services in June, so you're required to. So unfortunately, this happens. It isn't a big amount of money, but we do need your authorization to use current year funds for these bills.
You guys go through them, huh?
Yes.
I'm sure they're all legit.
We yell at everybody.
Yell at everybody. Okay, I'm trying to pay my bills that were due June thirtieth as well.
We're about to yell at you.
What is a B O P Y, the acronym?
Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to P E G, cable access quarter one payment.
This is our quarterly payment from Comcast, and we take the funding funds in, and then we give these funds to Focus Springfield. And this is the first quarter.
So the, this grant that we receive comes from?
Comcast. And then they give it to us, and then we accept it, you accept it, and then we cut, we give this money to Focus Springfield.
Sounds good. Questions, anybody?
So is it just the same quarterly amount every?
The different amount every quarter. It's been going down, not a lot, but it goes down a little, and it's based on subscriptions. It's, what is it, two percent? Two percent of Comcast quarterly revenue.
Okay.
So, yeah, it has been going out a little bit, but it's definitely going down.
So let's just talk, well, let's stick with this, and then I'll ask you later. Okay, any questions on that, for anybody? Over to that, Mass Emotion Grant Award. A Mass Emotion's been going on for quite a while, I'd say ten years or something. And that was a grant or an initiative in Helen Colton Harris's area. Where was it? What I knew about it was a state grant, you know, for physical fitness and health initiatives. Is that, but still with the school, is?
That is correct, yes. So the commissioner isn't able to join us today. She will be at the regular meeting tonight, but she did ask me to speak to it for the purpose of this meeting. So, yes, this is a Mass Emotion that we receive annually for about ten years now. This year's allocation is one thirty-nine, eight oh five, so we are level funded from last year. And the aim of this program is to improve health outcomes overall, particularly where and for whom disparities or health outcome exist by addressing and calling, addressing the causes of the disparities related to healthy eating and active living, so. This funding supports mostly our program coordinator, Benjamin Bland, as well as a few O C P S line items as well.
And you said Helen will be at the meeting?
Yes, so if you have any additional questions, she'll care to speak to us.
Questions from anybody? Got to keep those health initiatives going. It's good. And gets us a number eight, this will be your twenty-six, T J O grant. That's required one hundred and eighty thousand. Is that you?
No, that's me.
Oh, that's right.
So this is a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant from the Foundation for T J O Animals. It helps to offset the salary for three physicians in a veterinary clinic as well as emergency surgery, specialty care, blood work, medical care, that's a bum beyond what we would anticipate tax payers should be for.
Is that enough?
We have spent a lot of money, I'd say. Veterinary care is still pretty hard to access. We are still without a vet, though we are hopeful that we are hiring someone hopefully for October. So it means we've still been sending veterinary care out to private veterinarians and private clinics, so I can certainly spend all of that and more.
There's equality in what we do still, despite the fact we don't have a vet. You're still getting.
Yeah, actually, the relief vets that we're getting in are incredible. I have retired vets. I have an amazing orthopedic surgeon who comes in to do hours. I have a relief vet who owns from practice in North Hampton and comes in on a volunteer basis. I have a really incredible roster of people who just want to help and help keep things going. But it is, it's a big ask for staff to try and get that continuity of care and know who's coming in each week and really keep things running smoothly.
Do we have veterinary clinics that we, like, I'm thinking of the one that my family uses, the veterinary clinic in town. Would they be asked to out, you might outsource to them, or?
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we use some private veterinarians in the area. We found a good one that gives us a really good discount to do some spay and neuter for us. We've utilized the Tufts Clinic in Grafton with the student veterinarians. So we've utilized a lot of different ways to access vet care.
I'm sorry, I kind of missed it, Tim, what this, what grant would be used for?
So this would offset salaries for the veterinary clinic at T J O, for the veterinarian, the veterinary coordinator, the vet tech, and then specialty care.
I got a grand dog now, so I love dogs now, okay? And so you got my support a hundred percent because veterinary care is so important for these little friends. I love my grand dog, okay? So, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
I bet my grand dog's better than you.
I, I don't think so. We can't, we can't compare, like.
So my family has a, my son lives next door, and we have a double lot, you know, so that the dog, their dog can run into my yard as well. And that's worked out for ten years or whatever. And that dog has cancer and still hanging in, running like crazy. But my, well, his grandchild lives in that house, too. She went to UMass three weeks ago, living there, and my son and daughter-in-law couldn't hack it. They bought another dog. It lasted a week without.
Oh, my goodness.
So that dog arrived yesterday. It's a doodle or, a doodle or something.
Oh, that's what I got. That's what Kobe is. So congratulations on your new grand dog, Tim.
Cousins.
Is yours named Kobe after Kobe Bryant?
Yes, it is, because he's black, so Black Mamba Kobe, yep, after Kobe Bryant.
So mine's named Reggie after Reggie Lewis.
That's cool.
Reggie Lewis played for the Celtics and died, if you didn't know the story. He was a terrific player. He wasn't as good as Kobe or Michael Jordan, but he wasn't far behind them, so.
Okay, nice to know.
All right, well, maybe we'll have a social event.
I do have a question, Miss. Just two questions. So the first one, you were saying that you use outside services, so you just use whoever you can get, like, the best deal with, essentially?
Or whoever's available. Like, right now, trying to find surgery is pretty difficult. Not every clinic or veterinary emergency place has a surgeon all the time. So it depends on what level of care we need and who's available.
And, and, because I was curious, I know we have a few different places within the city, a couple, but I wasn't sure. I'm sure you went through all that already.
We definitely try and get the best deal, so we use Tufts when we can, but going to Tufts also means I'm sending a staff person, and that's the entire day for that staff person and trying to transport all those animals. So it's like you win some, you lose some.
And then the other question, I was just kind of appreciative of you sharing the fact that we got a number of folks that are volunteering, so like, sponsoring, like, getting paid nothing?
Correct. We have some really incredible people who are sharing some really amazing skills.
I'd love to.
So we're tracking that.
Yeah, I'd love to learn more about that.
Recognize them.
And then the folks that are doing that, like, I'm assuming you have folks that have been doing this for a number of years as well, right? So I'd love to, like, get a list of those names or just.
Love you guys, actually, to come and just take a tour and see what's going on, because it's been a really wild year not having a vet. We've had a lot of staff turnover, but I think twenty twenty-six staffing, it's like, everything's falling into place. And we have some really cool partnerships with the M S P C A and Deacon and Berkshire Mean, so I think we have some really amazing stuff coming up.
Don't forget.
Right, so, great, it's nice. How we go as well? Yes, Stephen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. What's the main reason why you don't have a fedina in there?
That's a complicated thing. I can't name one specific reason. Part of it is salary. There is a shortage of veterinarians just countrywide. So they're commanding very high salaries. It's hard to compete as a municipality. So we were grateful that we had a raise in the salary, both because the foundation kicked in some extra money and the city did, so we're a little bit more competitive. And the residency requirement, I heard sort of through the grapevine, people did not apply for the position because they didn't think they would be eligible because they needed to be a resident of Springfield. So we don't have a lot of veterinarians living in Springfield. So we're actually in the process of talking with someone right now about the position, but we're going to have to go through the waiver process, and that adds time on to trying to hire someone.
And you can't hire them on a temporary basis?
I am, I do. I have lots of relief veterinarians coming in, but it's not the same as having someone who knows the shelter, knows what's going on with the animals. So every day, it's, okay, this is the vet for the day. Now we have to fill them in on what's going on with all the critical cases and just the basics, showing someone how to use the software. So when it's new people all the time, it's draining, and you're not as efficient.
Thank you.
Good question. Thanks for your work. Sounds it's been a challenge there for a while.
Yeah, it's a great place, though, so. I'm, I got vomited on before I came here today, so it's like. I picked up a gross, like, a mace-eated cat. Like, it fills your heart, because we're going to be able to do a refeeding and fix him, and we had a couple stray puppies, so, you know, we get upset when people think all we do is play with kittens and puppies, but sometimes you get to do that at the end of the day and remember the good parts of it.
Do you have comfort dogs there?
Every dog's a comfort dog. I have forty-one comfort dogs.
You have official comfort dog. Like, at Springfield, I teach at Springfield College, and they would turn finals a week. I don't know if they did it last year, but they did it a couple of years ago. They'd bring in a dog into the library, a comfort dog, and anybody could.
We have our staff dog, so sometimes my dog will come and chill for the day, but we usually pick, you know, like, right now, we have a really emaciated Doberman mix. He's about forty-eight pounds, and he should be more like seventy. So as soon as you look at him, your heart melts, and he's the nicest dog you've ever met. So he takes turns in the office. So we sort of cycle through, like, which dog really needs our love and attention, so. Have built-in comfort dogs and cats, and sometimes goats and.
Nice, goats?
Goats, yes. We get goats, we get chickens, we get roosters, we get fish, whatever Springfield has to present, we'll deal with.
Do you have a goat now?
No, we found a spot for the goat, but two weeks ago, I had goats and chickens and roosters.
Right, well, that's an interesting story. All right, I don't see anything else on the agenda, so maybe we have one more. So Jose, you weren't, Counselor Delgado, you weren't here at the beginning, but if you're comfortable making a motion, I'll go allow an approval motion.
Trust your judgment, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve items one through nine. Trust your judgment, Mr. Chair, uh, I make a motion to approve uh items one through nine.
Thank you, I second that, I'm in favor. Aye, so we approved uh these items going forward to the council meeting. And. You're gonna, we, we gotta get them early so we get Steve over to his volunteer job at T J O.
Okay.
I'll think of it.
A great place.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. We have a lot of gonets speed stuff on the agenda.
That'll be the, what, what you tell?
Value in talking about that here a little?
Are we allowed to talk about that?
Informally. Make a talk after, I, I just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of them on there, and I don't. And this meeting, this meeting's over, thank you for coming.